Okay, I have nine thirty. If we will convene the meeting, today is November one, two thousand twenty-two. It's nine thirty, we're in the board room. A roll call vote for attendance, please.
McIntyre?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Here, we do have a quorum. If you'd kindly rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes or deletions? I have one, number thirteen today is going to get pulled from the meeting. Are there any other ones? Seeing none, first up is our consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are enacted by one motion. Claims, we have a claims figure in the amount of one million, six hundred, seven thousand, eighty-three dollars and ten cents. Fringes in the amount of eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents. C, minutes to approve. Meeting on October eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. Board meeting, October twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Special meeting, October twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Work session. D, approved payroll removal. Removal, Stephen Garrett, dispatcher, sheriff's office, effective October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. E, approved payroll removal. Tammy Renaud, detention officer, sheriff's office, effective October twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. F, approved six-month wage increase. Leanna Schneider, Schneider, motor vehicle clerk, treasurer's office, effective October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. G, approved six-month wage increase. Megan Payne, motor vehicle clerk, treasurer's office, effective November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two. H, approved six-month wage increase. Miranda Bailey, zoning administrator, zoning department, effective November nine, two thousand twenty-two. I, approved step increase. Michael Nervig, motor grader operator two, secondary roads, effective November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two. J, approved step increase. Anthony Cunningham, equipment operator two, secondary roads, effective November twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. K, approved step increase. Brian Lester, equipment operator two. Weed, brush, secondary roads, effective November twenty-five, two thousand twenty-two. L, approved step increase. Doug Darks, Charts, shop service worker, secondary roads, effective November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. M appoints Sean Westrom to the zoning county, zoning commission to fulfill a term through twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. N, approved class C liquor license for Skyview Vineyard and Event Venue LLC. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCoke?
Aye, motion carries. Number two on the agenda is a twenty-five years of service recognition for dispatcher in sheriff's office.
I don't know if this has ever been done in the form of supervising the board, but now that I'm here, you'll probably see it law.
Good.
It's important that we recognize what the nine one one dispatch does on a daily basis. We all have difficult, and maybe some don't know how difficult that job is. For someone to stay twenty-five years in this profession is rare anymore. But she's here, she's still here. So as of the twenty-sixth of October, even though she was on vacation, we remember that she got hit twenty-five year mark. So that's a long time, and a lot of calls, and back, they did stats on it. She's taken close to nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand calls, nine one one calls per career. And the thing about dispatch center is it doesn't stop. It runs twenty-four seven, nothing. We just can't shut the door, say, no, we're getting home, tired. They are tired, it is tired work, we're sure staff, see the worst. I brought two nine one one dispatches with us today, so we have one that just started in Indio last week. And Kayla just hit her new year, so get twenty something to go. So with that being said, Kristy is a dedicated employee, I can't say enough, she's easy to supervise. She just does her job, her work ethic serves her well. She served the public today with that call. So I'd like to present to you Kristy with this twenty-five years of appreciation, after twenty-five years of service, and dedication to the Warren County Communications Center. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Congratulations, Kristy.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you for your service.
All right, bye-bye.
Number three on our agenda today is a public hearing for rezoning request submitted by Sam Taylor, one zero five four five, South Wald Road, from R two to C two. It is nine thirty-five, and I'll make a motion to go into a public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are in a public hearing. Good morning.
Good morning. Sam Taylor of one oh five four five, South Wald Road, Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three two zero, is asking to rezone from R two, single-family residential, to C two, general commercial highway service, to move his construction business onto two adjoining properties. He plans to tear down a dilapidated building and build a small office. He doesn't plan on having general public come. This is just basically for him to be able to do some paperwork. There's already suitable areas to the east and to the west of Sam's property. And he's done a great deal of cleanup on the property in the last couple of years. We've had no correspondence from the general public when we had our first public hearing with the zoning commission. And all members of the meeting that night voted for approval, recommended approval, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are in a public hearing. Anyone is welcome to comment on it. I just ask that you state your name and your address, and limit your times to three minutes or less kindly. Morning, David.
Just so we're clear, South Wald is a gravel road. Thank you.
Will you have a lot of trucks parked there and driving back and forth?
Hi, my name's Sam Taylor. It's my property in question. I've invested about two hundred thousand dollars in six years of my time in cleanup in this property. And I own the adjacent lots as well. And there is a trucking company that is actually around the corner of this. And there is a ball field, a skate rink, and the trucking company also has excavation and semis. Then there's another property that is up that does auto restorations. There's another one that does auto restorations. There's another construction company, a church. So it's a very commercialized area. And I have pickup trucks, is what I have, trailers. So.
How, are they just regular pickup trucks or?
Yeah, F three fifty is probably the biggest one.
Okay, and how many of those do you have?
I have about four of them.
Okay, all right.
And I also live on the road, so I have to drive down to Indio.
Oh, okay. What, what is it that your business does?
Exteriors. You know, we do roofing and siding and things like that.
General construction.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any questions or comments? How, Sam, how many, how many employees will be stationed there? Is it just yourself, sole proprietor? Okay, we're still in a public hearing. Any, anyone from the public or online, you are able to weigh in now. Today's your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to exit our public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCoke?
Aye, we're no longer in public hearing. Discussion from the board? Is it okay for us to ask Sam a question?
Sure.
One quick question, Sam. When, do you have additional equipment besides just the trucks? I mean, do you have backhoes or?
I have a backbone property, but that was to clear the land. So it's not actually something that's been used from the company. Because I don't know if you guys have the pictures up there, but there was about seven semi loads of metal. And I hauled tires out of there, I did everything the right way, and actually cleared the land.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Do you store, do you store your trucks inside, or do you store them out on the property or have that in your other equipment? Is that?
Yeah, so I have a, I have a pole barn, and my, my trailers and things are back behind there. The, the rest of the properties, though, it's hard to explain. I tried to add some pictures in there with all the different vehicles and things that are out and about. I try to tuck myself away, and I try to, and most of the time they're out at people's houses. But if not, then they're either in the pole barn or around back behind it.
That's all the questions I have.
Say, my, my discussion would be limited to the fact that much of the area surrounding this property is already zoned commercial. I understand that it is preferable to have that such zoning on pavement. I mean, I get it. But as I understand it, we've got a, a business owner, no additional employees, and a delta of about four vehicles. I can guarantee you can go to thirty other properties in Warren County that are in the rural area that have more than four vehicles sitting outside at any given moment. I'm appreciative of the fact that Mr. Taylor's greatly improved the property. I'm sure it was an eyesore at best when you, when you purchased it. And so it's moving in the right direction. And so for those reasons, I'm going to be supportive of making the zoning change in further consideration that the zoning board did approve it three, three, three to zero. Was that the, was that the vote?
What? The recommended, recommendation was approval. I had three members there that evening. We had one member that was ill, and all of them recommended approval.
Yep. That's all I have for comments.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Waving second and third.
Yes, and waving second and third readings.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. Number four today on our agenda is presentation from Kone regarding elevator contracts with possible action. Good morning.
Matt Murphy with Kone Elevators in Des Moines. I guess today we are here to present your options. We currently have contracts set up for your elevator maintenance. And you've installed three new elevators in the, the Justice Building. So we want to add those. You have a warranty on them. Right now, we're going to add an extended warranty on to that and combine all your contracts into one. We were asked to, to kind of explain the differences between the two types of contracts. The one you have right now on this building is what we call an oil and grease contract, which means you pay a smaller upfront fee, but then anytime there is parts needed or a breakdown or anything like that, you have to pay for that at a build rate. Now, the other type of maintenance contracts we propose are complete maintenance, where everything is covered, all parts, all repairs, other than vandalism or something like that would be covered. So, so those are pretty much the two types of contracts. We suggest with the type of units you're putting in over there, there can be, it's a smaller upfront cost for the oil and grease, but we do not recommend that for those types of units because the components in those can be very, very expensive. So you could be out three, four thousand dollars after one repair. And, and it would take up all your savings on the lower amount upfront. So we did print this up. We can submit you the, the two different types of proposals to, to look over. I guess, what questions did you have?
To be honest, sir, I don't have it in my packet, and so I've.
Okay.
I don't believe I've had a chance to look at them yet, but I'd, I'd love to, to look at the contracts. We'll take it under.
Two types.
I'm going to recommend that we take them under advisement, but I'm happy to ask some questions about it and, and address it at a work session.
This is, this is the less expensive oil and grease type, and this is the complete maintenance.
Okay, that's all right. Darren maybe already has one. Crystal, have you seen that already?
No, I haven't.
So.
So are you recommending that we do like a complete service agreement for all of our, all of our units in Warren County in all of our buildings?
Yes.
And that's what you, this contract?
That is combining everything, right? We do have them under, we have this building under contract. The other building is a free service warranty right now, and this would be to combine all the units together into one contract.
Okay.
And there is another option in there to use Omni Agreement, which is a government buying agreement, which has already been bid through the city of Kansas City. So it is the lowest available price to you, and we can rider this onto that too, if that's the route you wanted to go.
Okay.
Yeah, I think since it's not in our packets, and the board just hasn't had a lot of time to compare which way to go. I'm sure we're going to want to have some level of service.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you are covered right now for at least the next year through May of next year. This is, you know, just thinking ahead, right?
Well, thank you, thank you for.
What is our, what is our one year? Is it a complete maintenance and repairs, like anything absent vandalism or? What's the current warranty through May of next year?
Through May of next year is complete maintenance, yes. It's, everything's covered except for vandalism or acts of God.
Yeah, and I would just say that when we were doing the, the project at the Justice Center, just want to thank Kone for responding. We had inspections to get through, and it was intensive times, and your company always stepped up in a pretty strong way to make sure that our needs were taken care of.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for that, whatever you're doing, you're doing it right, and we hope you continue to do that as we build our relationship with you.
Absolutely, absolutely, appreciate that.
These are critical, critical components in our Justice Center. We have, you know, various functions in that building that are, I think, mission critical. So, you know, what you do and what you're doing for Warren County is important.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you.
Can you talk about the push call? And explain the difference? How we have it set up now?
The, for the prison, the elevators?
Or somebody gets stuck in the elevator?
Oh, the phone monitoring.
Okay, so there's two things we're doing that's already included with your, with the elevators, the new ones we put in. Are you talking about just the phone in the phone?
Connecting to ours.
Okay, so, so we'll monitor the phone lines. So that if you press the button in the, in the phone, in the elevator, it calls our dispatch center that's in Moline, Illinois, and they are trained in many different languages. I don't know, it's like a hundred different languages. They can put them through to a call center, so, and they're also trained to talk people down if they're kind of, you know, hyperventilating or something as they're stuck in the elevator. So we like to, to tell our customers to have them call our dispatch center unless, because the, the phones have to be monitored twenty-four hours a day. So it can go to your security desk if that was monitored twenty-four hours a day or not. But if it does call our dispatch center, they're trained to kind of talk them down and other, whether call you or whatever numbers you give us, call nine one one, call whatever. But the first call would be to our technicians to come and get them out. That's if you press the button in the car. They also are equipped with twenty-four seven remote monitoring in those units, the new units, so that it monitors fault codes and all types of stuff like that. So it has predictive analytics. So if it sees the same door opening slowly on the third floor over and over and over, it's going to dispatch a technician out here to take a look at that car, to see why it's doing that before you have a breakdown. Both of those options are available to you and included in our price.
That's in the complete person?
It's in both, yes.
In both?
Well, it's in the complete maintenance. Did you, you didn't put in the oil and grease probably, but the, the phone monitoring, pressing the button in the car, is in the oil and grease. The twenty-four seven connected service is in them both.
Excellent.
And just to go off of that, like an example is, we were just at a site for a high school, and they had a third-party phone monitoring service where the, I think a student with a disability was like entrapped in there, and they had to call to get connected to us, and it got connected to a third-party service. And they didn't even know where they were, and it wasn't like right directly to us. I think that was like a really big thing that I talked with, with Jamie, where having it like with us here, it will get connected straight to our dispatch, and they'll know the location, and getting it straight to one of our service techs to get right away to that location.
It's much quicker, much quicker.
I think when we first did this, we had this set up to go to our dispatch. So if you weren't trapped in the unit, which could happen. It did happen.
Does happen.
It did happen. They pressed the button and it went to our dispatch as opposed to going directly to Kone.
Right.
And we found that there were some inefficiencies in that. We ended up calling our fire department in Inunola, and they came over and solved it in a way that maybe it could have been better, better handled if we went to the manufacturer of the unit that understood how to open the doors when they were lodged and.
Yeah, the problem with the fire departments opening doors is it can probably cost you money after the fact because they'd get them open at all costs, incidentally, using the keys or whatever it could be.
No one was hurt, no one was, there were no problems. The person was taken out, and, but it was a good learning experience for us. It really actually what, that's what sparked us to start talking about, okay, in the future, how, how should this be handled? And it kind of made us better as we start talking. And that's really when we got involved with you.
Absolutely.
That's when we called you and said, Kate, come down here and talk to us in more detail about how we should be thinking about this.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I appreciate your time, and the, the contracts, we'll, we'll review them. We'll address it at a work session. I just, I can't make decisions on the fly like that.
Understood, understood, yes.
We'll give it some time.
We have plenty of time, like I said, you got through May of next year, so we just won't be preemptive.
Sounds good. I appreciate both of you coming and discussing with us.
Yep, thank you.
Moving right along. Number five today is consider approval of Warren County Conservation Board Grand Park Water Meter easement with possible action. Good morning.
Good morning. Conservation Board is asking for you to approve the easement to allow Marion County water to put the meter pit on county property at Grant Park.
Do you have any thoughts on it? If you're supportive.
I need water, I have a shower building.
It's going to be hard to do showers without water.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
I reviewed the easement, and it looks good.
Everyone's saying the right words, I'm supportive.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Warren County Conservation Board Grand Park Water Meter easement with possi- without possible action, that's my motion.
Second.
Discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six is discussion of new telephone system with possible action. Good morning, Matt.
Roughly two and a half years ago, this board asked me whether or not we should examine our current telephone system. And at that point in time, due to potential contract buyouts, I advised against it because of the expense. But now we have essentially come close to the end, and I believe that it is a time to make a change. So what I would like to know is to get your permission to source a different phone system because I don't know of any elected official or any department head that is enamored of our current system or provider. And I've been working with Don Bowman on this, and I would just like to have permission to proceed and see if we can lower our cost of doing business as far as on an annual basis, but also be aware that it's going to cost an investment upfront for new equipment.
But ultimately save us money.
Yes.
Yes.
With hopefully a lot greater functionality than what we presently have.
Great.
I'm completely, I'm completely in favor of anybody within Warren County going out to the marketplace and seeing if there's a better situation for us. So from my standpoint, I'm in favor of you going out and, not only, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to go out and do that, so.
Same, there's no downside to it. So if, if, if we can get greater functionality at a cheaper cost, even with an upfront investment, that's certainly worth exploring at a minimum. So you've got, you've got three on board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don, I don't believe we need a resolution for that. It says possible action, but.
Yep.
All right, number seven is consider inter-operating transfers with possible action. A, Nutrition, B, Justice Center. Good morning, Megan.
Good morning. So we had discussed both the Nutrition and Justice Center transfers at the work session. Nutrition, it's kind of a timing of when we get the revenue versus the expenses, and just making sure that we keep a healthy fund balance in the Nutrition Fund. And then the Justice Center, in fiscal year twenty-two, we had held, we had budgeted for a one point two million dollar transfer. We didn't end, end up doing the full amount. Even with this five hundred thousand dollar transfer, we would still be leaving some in the general fund, some more than what we had originally budgeted for. And I do have resolutions here.
So the two proposals are, was a ten thousand dollar transfer to Nutrition, and, and as discussed in the work session, it really falls on the timing of revenue and expenses. But I also didn't think that it, it made a whole lot of sense to be, to run it so close where we might have another issue down the road. And so anytime that you have a negative fund balance, as you well know, because we sat in on the entrance exam for our audit, that's, you don't want to, you don't want to run them in the negative. So I just don't think it makes sense to keep them so close on that one.
We have, we received an aging resources check of twenty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-two fourteen. That'll go in for October, but even with that, just to kind of make sure that.
See, we were still two hundred and forty-six dollars shy on one snapshot of a day because that check didn't happen yet, and there was a, a transfer from the sheriff's department that hadn't happened yet, but they were both due, so sort of an accounts receivable, but the timing didn't line up. So for ten thousand dollars, we just make sure that it, we don't run it so close. And the second one was five hundred thousand, and that, that comes from the one point two that was dedicated to the Justice Center. That's transferring presumably the final transfer into the project for five hundred. And if there's anything remaining from that, that'll head back to the general fund at the conclusion of the project, so.
Any questions from the board on either of those inter-operating transfers? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer for ten thousand dollars to Nutrition.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll make a motion to approve the second inter-fund operating transfer to the Justice Center in the amount of five hundred thousand.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye, both carry. Thank you, Megan.
We'll sign those resolutions.
Number eight on our agenda is consider approval of ARPA-funded projects with possible action.
Morning.
So we asked to be on the agenda. This is for the septic work being done at the Pearl Shop site. The total cost of the work is $10,900 to put the septic system in. Currently, they're grading the site and preparing to put the building up.
And if you could refresh the board's memory, what was the original ARPA proposal on the shop site?
I believe it was $250,000. That's for the total programmed amount.
Okay.
And we, I think we intend on stopping at the septic, so that should, should be it for this project as far as seating and the rest of the utilities go. We're going to handle that more in-house. They're, they're not small items, but they're small in proportion to these items.
Okay. And just for my benefit too, we've approved the, the steel building portion of this already?
Ye- yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just saying, when you add them all up, I think we're still pretty, pretty well under the original proposal.
Yeah, I try to program them high, but sometimes there's a project or two I fall short on, but hopefully I'm hitting the right range on most of these, so.
I got it. Okay. Those are all the questions I had.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the payment in the amount of $10,900 to Vanderpool for septic work.
Second.
Discussion from the board. Rule call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Did we have a second one as well?
Yeah.
Or Darren, do you want to present it?
Yeah.
The 8,000, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
There you go.
The, we're looking for an approval for $8,000. The application was in front of us in a work session. It's for the structural engineering study for the West Anx Building and the House of Mercy Building, just to get a firm understanding of the structural strength or lack thereof of those buildings. This is really the one thing that prohibits us from really developing a plan when we don't really, we don't understand the civil engineering in these buildings. So we should have a report back here in a couple of weeks and that will help move our, our group forward to understanding what the future looks like.
Thank you. I'm supportive of it. I, I think that absent that report, it's difficult to know what your full options are. And so, you know, it is a cost, but it's a cost that I think is going to make sense and probably pay some dividends by helping, if nothing less, by helping this board or future boards determine, you know, what really the options are with some of our properties and space needs. So I'm supportive.
Don handed me the resolution. If you want me to read it?
Sure. You ready?
Be resolved that Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby approves the ARPA funds in the amount of $8,000 to pay structural engineer Jim Tomitich, P.E., to advise the Facilities Committee regarding county facilities.
I'll make that motion. So moved.
Yep. Second.
Discussion, rule call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Jamie. All right. Number 10 on our agenda this morning is consider calendar year 2023 insurance benefits renewal proposal from True North with possible action.
Yeah, the 2080 agreement.
Oh, let me move up to nine, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
I was just crossing things off my list and moving on to number 10, but let's go back to number nine. Consider 2080 agreement with Iowa DOT with possible action. Good morning, Julie.
So this is the, really just a cleanup of the 2080 we already have in place for a driver's license. They just went through and cleaned up some language. They added some equipment that the county is supposed to provide for them in order to do this. That wasn't in there. We already had it, but it just wasn't in the 2080. Don reviewed it, found one typo, and so I had them fix that. And so I do have a new copy for you to sign, Erin. Questions?
Any additional expenses from the, the new agreement or no?
No.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions for the treasurer?
No.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the, the new revised 2080 agreement between Warren County and the Iowa DOT.
Second. How many years from the last renewal or inception of this 2080?
Well, probably 20. We started in 2000, so 22. I don't think we've had a revision since.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
How am I motion, Don? Do I need to authorize the chair to sign it too, or is that just given? And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Rule call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, number 10. I'm actually excited about number 10. I love number 10. Consider calendar year 2023 insurance benefits renewal proposal from True North with possible action. And I'm not sure who's presenting this, but I, I will if needed.
Do you want to mention the numbers?
That'd be great.
So we had talked with True North about doing the 2% increase for employees and for the county and keeping the HDHP plan the same as last year. So I just kind of need to get some final numbers on that.
There were some additional benefit tweaks too. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, to the.
So we are looking at adding a hearing aid plan to the, to the dental plan and adding some lens options to the vision plan as well.
Sure. There's a small tweak on the specialty drugs and.
So the specialty drugs will go to the 100 and 200. They were at 50 last year, so those will bump up to the 100, 200.
Okay. So the proposal for us, we've, and just for the public's benefit, it might seem as though we're, we're sort of moving pretty quick through some of these items. And, and the reason that we, we do that and can do that, we don't always do that, but is because we set up work sessions, public work sessions, and we, we hashed through these. This one, I think, came to us in, at minimum two, maybe three different, three different times while we worked through the numbers and worked through what benefit renewals look like for the county. I'm really pleased by the end result of, of this one. When True North came, average county health insurance costs across the state of Iowa were increasing in the eight to nine range, eight to nine percent for counties, for, for government. I would expect, although I don't know this, that the private sector was, was equal or maybe greater than that. Most of those costs just get passed on to employees. So if your health insurance, say you work at XYZ Company and your health insurance cost to renew the plan for next year goes up 12%, generally employees eat 12% cost. Their costs just go up 12%. Warren County has been very diligent and I'm proud of the work that's been done here at the county on our health plan. We've made some, some pretty substantive changes, including adding a high deductible healthcare plan by working with wellness to make some of the impact of the wellness credit more applicable to costs with a sort of a goal, an overarching goal of lowering prescription costs, because that's usually where the rubber meets the road on health plan costs and having a healthy workforce. And so for us, at the beginning of the renewal process, I think it was somewhere around the 4.5% increase, which was, you know, materially lower than most other entities, whether that's private or public. We did work further with True North, who is a, just a stellar company to work with for benefits, and it ended up being somewhere around 4% increase. And collectively, the county and employees are effectively splitting, splitting that. The contract or, or general provisions allow for a 2% cost increase for employees and the county's picking up the other 2.05 or whatever it is, but it's effectively going half-seas on the healthcare plan at a pretty minor increase, which is, which is a big deal when you have a, you know, a few hundred employees and, you know, the plan itself's a couple million dollars. So 2% up is, is, is a win. So real supportive of it, thanks to True North. And, you know, I don't blame them for not coming today. It's sort of perfunctory at this point, but anyhow, there you go. All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the calendar year 2023 insurance benefits renewal proposal from True North.
Second.
Discussion, rule call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, number 11, is maintenance update. Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Wonderful.
Great.
So I guess I am here to give you the update on the fun stuff that's been happening with maintenance. Are there any questions?
No, we're not cold, so that's good.
Yeah, everybody's warm? No. So we're trying a few different methods on the maintenance side, trying to create a, a routine maintenance schedule with plant maintenance and corrective maintenance as well. Basically trying to catch problems before they happen and alleviate the extra costs that comes with the, with the corrective maintenance. So I've got a lot of projects going on right now. We're talking about introducing a new e-maintenance, which is pretty much like a data collection thing, so we can input all of our assets and, and all of our schedules and stuff on that. So, yeah.
Is that like an app?
Uh, it's, yeah. Yep, it's an app that you can use mobilely to.
Is that one of the ones that you guys presented before or no?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's something on the agenda like four items down that covers that specifically that I think Jamie wants to come or somebody wants to come in, give us more details. There's been a lot of meetings on that. I think there's, you know, good understanding on what the recommendation's going to be, but.
So you're, you're looking forward to implementing this and?
Uh, yep. I think there's a few other departments that are on board with using it and possible other departments that could utilize it after they see it implemented.
Great, okay. So how do you feel about how maintenance is going at this point?
Uh, I feel like it's going good as long as we can keep, keep up on our filter changes over at the Justice Center. It's a, it's a big project over there and requires a lot of attention, but with the new staff member, we've been able to, to make it work, so things are going a lot better than what they did a year ago when I was here, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the update.
Yep.
Thank you.
Number 12 today is retainage payout request with possible action.
Okay, so we have two contractors asking for their full retainage. The first one is Clark. They're asking for $36,092.25. That would be the full payout on theirs. They don't have any pending punch list items. Shive approves, DCI approves, and Darren and I approve paying that out. And then the second one is Kone. Final payout, $38,022.43. They don't have any punch list items. DCI approves, Shive approves, and Darren and I agree.
Don, do we need separate motions on them?
Please, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve full retainage payout and the remaining approximate $36,000 to Clark.
Second.
Rule call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the full retainage payout to Kone in the approximate amount of $38,028 and change.
Second.
Rule call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Jamie, while you're up here, how many contractors do we have left with retainage amounts? What's the number of getting down to?
We have two left. I have one for De Vries, which is in my email to get ready, get the final sign off from Shive, and then the last one will be Cunningham. And then we have Parshals, Polyjail, we withheld 1%. Core, we withheld 1%, and I believe DDVI, we withheld 2%.
Okay.
So hopefully those will be wrapping up soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's the last one?
What's that?
Who was the last?
DDVI. Well, it's my, it's my hope that, that assuming the punch list gets where we need it to be and to have it wrapped, to have it completed by the end of the year on the financial aspect of it.
I think that would be possible.
Might be nice for that new board member to have one less thing to deal with, so. All right. Number 14, number 13 has been canceled or removed from our, our schedule, so I'm not jumping ahead this time. We actually are on number 14 and that is e-maintenance discussion with possible action.
Good morning.
So we've met with e-Maint. It's a new app and web-based application. It holds all of our assets, so we've included maintenance, IT, and the engineer's office to help better control fleet management for engineer's office. With IT, we're going to implement everything that the county purchases and put this into e-Maint. That way we can rotate things with end of life. That way we're not stuck with something that has end of life and we have to figure out where budget-wise, where we need to purchase this from. e-Maint also does maintenance tickets. You can implement, put in a maintenance ticket and it goes to the maintenance team. They can assign it to someone, so they can put in what they're, what they're needing and it also takes it out of their inventory. So when they do get low on their inventory, it will automatically, we can set it up so it orders right away for them. We can run reports for budgeting purposes, for the budget coordinator, for anything that she needs. Anything you want to add to it?
It's, it's kind of a dual benefit. It's number one, we should be getting a handle on our inventory in our county with our assets and understand those, understand the depreciation cycles and understand, so we can budget for the things we need a couple of years out.
Right.
It'll help us understand what our equipment and HVAC needs and our facility needs.
Very good.
It'll help us predict those.
Great.
So that's, so inventory management, automating maintenance and data collection.
Yes.
So when leaders come to the board and they want to do things, they'll have some data that supports why they're doing what they're doing.
Okay.
And so it solidifies our decisions and helps us get through what we need to be thinking about.
Yeah. Right now, we have just spreadsheets and spreadsheets of what the inventory is. We have nothing for disaster recovery. So something we're. So if something were to happen to our server, we're at a loss. I mean, it's just on spreadsheets, stored on our server. So this is web-based, so you could go home and pull it up.
Yeah, right now, if you were to, excuse me, if you were to ask, you know, when's the last time this room's been painted, or when's the last time we've worked on our boiler, or when's, it would be probably pretty difficult for us to come up with that answer going a few, more than just six months back. So this is just a continuous understanding of what's happening with our assets historically, so we can go back and understand where we've been and where we're going.
And how much money we've spent on something. Is it worth buying new versus keeping to replacement parts? I mean...
Yeah, it's data that I think we deserve to have that understanding of what's going on, because it's impossible to track just with our own, you know, memories and our paper files.
Yep, and David went up to Marshall County, actually uses e-Maint, so...
Yeah, I think another advantage on top of the ones that were mentioned too, is in today's world, we might be 12 months, 18 months out on a part, on a piece of equipment. So if we can better forecast and maybe even order a month ahead of time and break that, cut that window down, I mean, you gotta build your data up over a couple years, but it's something I think you can expand upon once you build that solid foundation and even start forecasting some of those things where it just helps you do your job maybe a little better. If I can even save a month in ordering time and that window, and it becomes 11 months, that's still a benefit to us, so.
It helps us become proactive. You know, generally, it helps us see what's coming up around the corner, so we can proactively make our decisions. So we're not sitting in a situation where something's busted, or something's broken, or we can't get a part, and we're kind of stuck.
And in our case, we're at a crossroads with our department with being in the process of building a new shop, so it can't be a better time to look into something of this nature to, it's way easier to implement something as you're unpacking into the new home versus trying to reconfigure what's already there when space is limited. So time is of great opportunity and of the essence for us in implementing something.
We've probably had four meetings with David and some of his team and some of the other leaders in the county to look at different companies. And so we've learned a lot. We've actually talked to another facility manager up in northern Michigan, who is from a county of about twice our size, and they have this implemented. And their facility manager was going through all the benefits and it was really educational. You know, when you can talk to another county and another state and how they've applied this, it's pretty positive. And there were a lot of benefits to what they were doing.
We're gonna use barcodes on all of our inventory. That way, you can just go to something and scan it with your phone, and it'll tell you the depreciation on it. It'll tell you everything that's maintenance on it. It'll just, and you can put a picture in it. It does take about eight to nine weeks for implementation, but we're looking at having someone come on site to actually set it up with us and set it up correctly, so we can use it to its full advantage.
Example that people are sick of me probably talking about now is I just envision a box of 100 bolts. And now by clicking on that QR code, each time I grab five bolts out of there, it knows I have 95 left. You know, it's inventory management. And each time they scan it again, now I have 20 left, and I know to make an order, I'm not guessing. So it's kind of a simple example, but we can literally track that bolt as it comes in the door and gets put on the machine, and then tie it to our accounting codes and basically more powerful tool to analyze the data.
Amazing.
Is this the one that can order for you?
We can set it up to where it sends an email and will tell you, hey, you have five of these left, it's time to order. Or we can also set it up for scheduling for the maintenance team for filters. It'll send them an email or a maintenance ticket that says, okay, it's time to change filters. It will also do scheduling. It'll do whatever we really want it to do, is however we want to set it up.
Great.
That's how powerful it is, is that you would have to set the reminder, but it'd be a good reminder, every time I have 20 bolts left in this box, it's gonna send me an email notification, hey, you better order some more bolts for your equipment.
As we get used to it and we build it, eventually, we could probably add more departments to it and be more powerful. It's just in having one system versus 14 different systems would be very beneficial for us.
And Katie's done a good job, just so everybody knows, of like coordinating these meetings, keeping us on focus, getting the right people in the rooms. So thank you to you and the attorney's office for, you know, contributing to that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I haven't seen an agreement on it. Is there a...
Yeah, are you looking for, are we trying to make a decision on this, Katie? Or are we...
Yeah, so Brian said we, he'll set everything up as soon as we get everything signed and approved from the board. He sent me a quote of everything. It's around $36,000 for, I think we said, nine users. But then we can set it up to have one full user, and then we can have engineer be like a super user, and they only see their department. And we can set it up to IT only sees their things, and maintenance only sees theirs things. So it's not like maintenance will see the engineer's office stuff. They will only be able to see their items.
Is there a recurring cost with it as well?
Every year, it's depending on how many, like, full users we have versus users, it's, I think, $1,040 a year.
How much for each additional user?
And then depending on what type of user you want, some we can set up as just app users, and I believe those were $480. So if you just want to be able to open and close tickets, not make any changes to inventory or anything, those would just be $480.
Okay. How about for like department heads to be able to put in a maintenance ticket themselves?
So those are free. Anybody can put in a maintenance ticket. We've talked about putting the QR code on the internet, so the department head can put in a maintenance ticket, or whoever can put in a maintenance ticket, and then it goes to someone, and they submit it to whoever is appropriate.
Awesome, thank you.
Can you give them the breakdown of what you had, Brian?
So the breakdown would be nine users, and we had someone come on site for four days. And their implementation fee, what comes down to the $36,000. I think it's beneficial to have someone on site, so we set it up correctly, and we're using it correctly.
Anything else? Am I missing anything else?
Yeah, we're, our department's also interested in the mobile capabilities. Our only recommendation is that we start with the super user and main user side of things and get it built first before you take it the next step further, because it is so powerful and such an all-encompassing software. If you don't start small and kind of work your way up, it's gonna be, you're gonna be over enundated with information pretty quick.
Okay.
And I think one thing that we heard pretty repeatedly throughout this process is this software and this tool is only gonna be as good as we make it on the front end. And so I don't know if we've done a good enough job of getting buy-in from everybody that's gonna be impacted, because, you know, maybe Julie will have to come up with a bunch of data, how many assets does she have in her department, over 5,000? What are her paper usages? We're gonna need a lot of information from our leaders to build this system appropriately. And I don't know that we've even reached, you know, I don't know if we're ready to make a, I mean, I don't know, I don't think we're quite ready to make a decision without getting the buy-in and the understanding of the project that we're in for, okay? Like, this is a big project that we're gonna have to have our ducks in a row in a pretty serious way, pretty quickly. So if I go to Julie and ask her for a list of 20 things, how long is it gonna take her to get it to us? Because we're gonna need that in place before they even come on site. We're gonna have to have that data, their inventory of our auditor's office, our attorney's office, our public health department, all encompassing for this to work right. Because it's not gonna help us to know what 80% of our assets are, or 70% of our assets. This is all encompassing, hits every department. And so we just need to make sure that we got everybody's buy-in, and everybody understands what's in front of us. I think that should be something that we're starting to introduce to people here.
They will also make us a sandbox application, so we can go in and play around with it. So the engineer's office can go around, go in and play around with what they have already implemented on their spreadsheets before we actually go live.
Great.
Yeah, we would pick about a dozen items as examples that are real world items, so like the box of bolts, semi maybe, a sign. We can put QR codes on signs eventually. I mean, that's, it's as powerful as you make it again. But to start off, we would pick those key examples that we think would impact each, you know, crew that we have and that could possibly use the software. And again, we just, you'd have to start small and really build those 12 things out and watch it work before you put 100 things in or 1,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's doable, but that's how I would approach it. And that's why the sandbox that she brings up is kind of a critical component of it, to allow us that window of time to figure out the software.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't know if we need nine users. Like, I still in my mind don't understand why we need that many. So, and that's directly related to our cost. If we have five users as opposed to nine, our costs are almost cut in half. And so I think we really need to push to figure out super user versus regular user versus administrator and understand that a little. I think we should be able to get below nine users, but that's just my opinion right now. I'd like to get some more information on why we have the number of users that we need and just dive into that a little bit more and give that information to the board, so they know why we're doing what we're doing.
Right.
Because in my mind, I still can't connect why we need nine. I mean...
Well, depending on department heads, I guess, if they would want to come and use this for all of their inventory, I could see that, but I'd like to see the buy-in first of how many department heads would really want to come in and...
The reason we have it structured that way is our office would be one user. It wouldn't be myself, it would be the entire staff in the office. Mechanics would be one user, so they can click the bolts. And then the road superintendents would be another user. And the only reason they're users is that allows them the access to be able to not necessarily overwrite the office's data, because we're gonna set those permissions, but they're gonna have to be able to input data no different than the office, and that's why they have that full user. Because if we just go with the app, they're gonna have more of that read-only type access, and they won't be able to use those, some of those capabilities, is why we have.
So many users.
Three or so users from our department.
Fair enough.
Only thing I don't see on here is that it goes out and then price compares other companies, so if it'll do that, it'll be pretty powerful.
So to be efficient with our time, I think what should happen is I'm feeling as though the board is relatively supportive of e-maintenance. I know that the group's done a lot of work on figuring out which company to go with. I don't have the contract in front of me, and so again, I'm not, I'm just not making decisions without contracts. It's never gonna happen. But I did also hear that to make it truly worthwhile, we probably need to have some employee and department buy-in from it. So since we're probably, you know, I think we do need to do a department head meeting before the end of the year, so I'd like to get that scheduled in the month of November, and we can bring this up, we can bring up a couple topics and have one of those meetings. And hopefully by then, we'll have the contract as well, and maybe we can further flesh out at that meeting or in a different meeting, you know, how many users we really need, because, you know, the upfront startup cost is somewhat, it's not inexpensive. And so if there is a way to make it really functional, but to have five or six super users, you know, I'd certainly want to explore it. But absent having buy-in from the other department heads and a contract in front of me, I mean, nothing's gonna happen today on it. So Michaela, if you want to find a time to do a department head meeting in November, and we'll add this to the list, I've got one or two probably from the audit to bring up too, so.
Is it okay to schedule a demo, say, do an online demo?
That'd be great. More information's better than less. So, is that fair, Erin?
Yeah, it is. I like the demo idea, for sure. And invite all our leaders in and have them really get an understanding of what this is and what we're in for. I mean, this is a lot of work to get this going. It's gonna take a lot of time.
Okay.
But it should save it on the backend, so.
Sounds good. Well, we'll look forward to doing that and having an end-of-the-year department head meeting too for November. So, okay, perfect, thanks. Number 15 is tree removal discussion with possible action.
I just have two quick things. We have two trees that need to be removed on the, one on the front lawn and one off to the side. The big sycamore tree on the side is causing some issues. And then there's a dead tree that's out in front, so I have two quotes. One and both of them are removing the stump and the tree. So one from J&amp;K Tree Services is $6,513, and one from Kraus is $6,020.
Okay.
$6,020 from Kraus and $6,513 from J&amp;K.
I don't have any issue removing the dead tree. What's the matter with the big sycamore tree?
It's causing, apparently Kirk has been looking at trying to get it removed for a while. It's causing some sidewalk issues. It's starting to kind of lean, the sidewalk is starting to heave. And it's in a kind of a small grassy area. They built the sidewalk around it, so there's not a lot of green space there. So if you go out and take a peek at it, it seems to be heaving, so it's either gonna land across the street or across the parking lot. Drops. Yeah.
Well, it's been there a long time, and I like trees, more trees than less trees. So, you know, absent maybe taking a look at it and hearing really why this thing needs to go, other than it's somewhat of a nuisance by dropping some limbs in a storm from time to time, or, I mean, if it's really destroying concrete and things, then I might be inclined to do it. But at this point, it just seems like more green space isn't much of an argument for me. I view trees as green space, so I'm not supportive of taking it out.
It may be like something, well, we can just get it trimmed properly? You know, like, is it really being taken care of? And, I don't know, I mean, your opinion?
I can check. I do have, because Bedwell has been over and planted some additional trees, and so I do have a tree on order, a smaller tree to replace it if you guys decide to, that they'll plant in the spring.
I probably need to go take a look at it. I don't, that's what I would do, that's what I would like to do, is look at. Do you know what tree, like, you...
And I can talk to Kirk and see why he was, why he's been looking for bids, and maybe it's like what Tracy and Julie said, it's just been dropping branches in storms and...
Did they break down the quote?
Yes. So for J&amp;K Tree Services, to remove this small tree was 100 bucks, and then the stump removal was 50. To remove the sycamore was 5,700 and 300 for the stump. For Kraus, it's 5,000 for the sycamore, 700 for the stump, 200 for the small tree, and 120 for the stump.
So what was it a little bit on the...
Overall, it's Kraus. On the one tree, it's J&amp;K. They were at 150. Kraus is at 320.
I'm fine removing the dead tree and having the stump ground down on that as soon as they want to do it. On the other one... soon as they want to do it. On the other one, I need more information to, to say I want to spend 5,000 or 6,000 taking out a very mature tree.
Yeah. Should we consult an arborist at this point, maybe?
I mean, if the, if the, if the reasoning on taking the tree out is because it's messy or because it drops some branches, perhaps a trimming would prolong its life for another decade or two. And, I'm, I'm just not in a rush to take it out.
Okay.
I don't see conservation here, but I would maybe check with them first.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They know their plants?
Yeah.
So, can we make a motion to take out the dead tree?
Whatever the apparent little bit on the dead tree, I'm fine making a motion.
Okay, yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to remove the dead tree and to get further information on the larger sycamore tree.
And replace it, the dead tree?
So, I, yes, but not right away. I'm working with Hometown Pride on that stuff. So, we're kind of looking at that space. So, I do have a plan. Galen's going to replace it for us, but it's probably going to wait until the spring when, so we can figure out where to place it.
Wow. It's actually going to be planned. That's wonderful. I love it.
Okay. There's the motion. I'll second that motion. And, rule call, please.
Mackinter?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jacook?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you make a motion?
Crystal did.
Oh, Crystal made a motion, okay.
And perhaps that tree goes. I don't know the answer, but that's not my initial thought. All right. Number 16 is consider dissemination agreement between, or with DA Davidson with possible action. Morning, Megan.
Good morning. So, our current, we will be staying with our current agent, but our fee will actually be cut in half. So, there is a new agreement to be signed that was discussed in the work session. So, we just need the approval. And then, so then, Erin can sign and fill out the agreement.
I'll make a motion to continue working with DA Davidson and authorize chair to sign the dissemination agreement.
Second. I was waiting for Darren to need to do it.
No one seconds my motion. All right. Guess that's dead on arrival?
Dead on arrival.
All right. Motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Mackinter?
Aye.
Jacook?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number 17 is consider ISAC, ISAC's soil compaction project funding request with possible action.
Yes. Okay. Well, I'm just going to ask the, give you what the ask is. And it's for $600. And, I don't know if you've read what was in the packet or not, or the email from ISAC. We all got one.
Was anything in the packet?
It wasn't in the packet, but it was a, a prior email, probably about a week or two ago. And it was regarding the procedures and standards for minimizing soil compaction on agricultural lands during utility construction on wet soils. I've brought this up in past meetings, but I can go into more detail about it now. Basically, where there's drainage districts set up, they are a political subdivision of the county under Iowa code. And, the definition of drainage district shall be presumed a benefit to the public. What is happening at the Iowa Utilities Board is they are declaring these drainage districts in order to put in pipelines for companies that are approaching the Utilities Board. The Utilities Board are, is a three-member appointed board. And they have total control over the state of Iowa and its lands, therefore usurping any home rule or any authority that the Board of Supervisors may have in stopping this. Or, when the public come to us and say, "We don't want this on our land," or "I've decided not to work with this company," then the Utilities Board will, because of setting up this drainage district, they are allowed to, by eminent domain, take their land. And, so, in order to try to understand this further and to be able to take legal action on behalf of our citizens, a soil compaction project was started by ISAC. And, ISAC's is the supervisor part of ISAC, the group of us. And, so, we are asking every single county to contribute $600 to the total funding. And I believe it was $51,098 for the project. And it will establish a baseline for what some past farmers have experienced through working with these pipelines, is it took a total of eight years for them to get to maximum yields prior to the installation of these pipelines. And so, not only did it hurt their pocketbook, but they were never compensated correctly in the beginning, because they didn't know. And, of course, they were not informed of what would happen. And so, instead of just taking another farmer's word for it, want to actually have that kind of study done. So, that is what the ask is for, is contributing all counties for this, so that in the future, we can combat this. And, just for the public's knowledge, I would like to see the Utilities Board maybe made up of elected persons instead of appointed.
Well, I don't have an issue with $600. And, I don't have an issue with soil compaction testing. My question is, what, what happens if the total price tag is $50,000 and half the counties don't, don't participate? And/or, 80% of the counties don't participate? Is it then borne by the remaining counties that do? Or, how does that work?
Right. Well, these pipelines are going to cross a total of 70 counties in Iowa. So, funding this research is going to benefit the agricultural landowners in all future utility construction activities. So, I think all of us would benefit from this, because we don't know what's coming down in the future. In anticipation of not all counties will agree to the voluntary participation, the executive committees have recommended that all counties contribute $600. Counties making this voluntary contribution, I'm sorry, all funds for this will be accounted separately. I believe that it is ISAC's mission that, in the beginning, I think it was 500. So, I think they updated a little bit in anticipation of not everybody contributing. And we know at least 70 are going to contribute, because they're directly impacted by this. So, it's the remaining counties that, I think, have the voluntary contribution. So, they took that into consideration.
Okay, thanks. Darren, do you have any questions or thoughts?
No, I was kind of thinking the exact same thing, is how do, how do we get 100% participation in this and what happens if we don't? I think you answered that. So, I don't really have any, any objections to, to this.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And although it's not impacting us, it was a, a very passionate and heartfelt discussion for a very, very long afternoon of hearing a lot of these stories. So, at ISAC last time. So, thank you for your help and participation in this.
Well, I, I sort of like that if there's a baseline. I, I'm a firm believer in private property rights. And so, if, but I also understand that there are occasions where, you know, out of necessity, sometimes things happen. You know, we, we sometimes need to buy some right of way to do a bridge.
Absolutely.
You know? And, and that benefits a lot of folks. Maybe someone doesn't want to give up one-tenth of an acre, you know, on the thing. But, we, we have to do what we have to do to make it workable. But, if you're impacting other people's private property, there should be some sort of a baseline regarding compensation for it. I think that's fair to the farmers. And, so, I'm, I'm supportive too. So, if you want to make the motion, I think you've got support from the board.
Yes. Thank you very much. The ISAC, ISAC's soil compaction project funding request of $600, I would move to approve by the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Any further discussion from our board? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Mackinter?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jacook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number 18 is consider ARPA resolutions with possible action. Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning. I'm here today just because we need to amend a resolution that we had previously passed regarding using funds to, $5,000 to hire architect Steve Gray. We ended up doing a motion that approved that out of capital, the capital project fund. We would rather move that out of ARPA funds. So, here's the resolution. Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisor hereby amends Resolution 22364 to use ARPA funds in the amount of $5,000 to pay for the hire of architect Steve Gray to work with the Facilities Committee. The resolution mistakenly allocated the payment of that $5,000 to be from the capital project's budget rather than ARPA funds.
Okay. I will, I will move, yeah, I remember that. I will move to make that motion.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mackinter?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jacook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 19 is receive and file reports. We have our report from the Veterans Affairs. I'll make a motion to receive and file that report.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mackinter?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jacook?
Aye. Number 20, Supervisor's Report. Would anyone like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I was fortunate enough to be involved in a meeting this week with Sue Wilson, who's the director of WeLift here in Indianola. And, she and I went over to see Lieutenant Burrows, with permission of our sheriff, to talk about employment opportunities here for the incarcerated, when they come out, getting them prepared, getting resumes done, getting applications filled out while they're in our custody. So, when they are relieved from our custody, they potentially would have some employment. It was really a good collaboration between our, our community and our sheriff's office. And I just think that's moving forward. And that was a good meeting. I attended a sheriff's advisory committee meeting. And, I think that's a real strong committee with a lot of good input and a lot of strong membership. Various work sessions and special meetings. We sat in on some facility meetings with discussions of retainage analysis and what we would be recommending to the board. I sat in with zoning and learned that we got a lot of work coming from zoning in the next month or so with 11 new projects. And then, the application maintenance, the e-mate that we've been discussing, I've sat in on some of those meetings as well. So, that pretty much sums up my last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Darren. Crystal?
Yes, thank you. Met with citizens regarding APLA, ARPA funds, AG resources, Board of Directors meeting, various work sessions with the board and special meetings, Fifth Judicial, Department of Correction Board of Directors meeting, met with a citizen concerning staff and complaints here at the county, and met with Assistant County Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. I had an entrance exam for our county audit for the 2022 fiscal year. That is starting the, I think it'll be probably wrapped up in February or March. But, we've started the process. Met with dispatch director and county attorney, various work sessions and specials, had a meeting out at Bedwells regarding a tree project that has started. Some of those trees have already been planted. I anticipate most of the remaining ones will be planted in the spring, but a jump start has occurred there. Spoke with the superintendent of the Norwalk schools, who looks like he's pretty eager to maybe work collaboratively with that group on doing an Arbor Day in April. I think it's April 22 next year to hopefully send some saplings home with kiddos. Did address some citizens' concerns on a couple fronts. Did a tour of the Justice Center with some Norwalkians and Indianolans. Did a conference call with our health director regarding staffing and grant update. That's going to impact probably the facilities group and some other things as well. But, I think we're finally seeing some clarification regarding levels of staffing and how the grant's going to work out between the four counties that are in our district. Wanted to say congrats to the city of Indianola for opening up that final section of road. I know that the project's maybe not quite 100% done. But, a lot of good things are going to come from that last stretch of road being opened downtown. One of which is just pretty evident that we have a parking lot that is now accessible. And so, some of those county employees can actually park in the defined parking space as opposed to on the street. So, to some extent, that might alleviate some parking concerns or at least move those concerns in the right direction. And it's also just frankly nice to be able to, I, I grew up in Pella. And on Sunday nights, I didn't do it very often, but they used to call it scoop the loop. You drive your car around there. And some guys would drive in one car and some girls in the other. And, I think it was sort of a pastime. But, the fact that there's been no scooping of the loop here in Indianola for a very long time, I'm quite pleased that that can change. So, congrats, Indianola, for opening that up. Did take, or talked to a citizen regarding sort of a business request for an ARPA app. Going to let that gentleman know that after our last work session, it looks like those questions or applications or desires to fill out additional apps are probably going to be a next year item. I'll, I'll follow back up with that person. And then, finally, as always, I, I do want to make mention that there's a big election on November 8. I do sort of keep tabs at the auditor's office. And the last I had heard is we're somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 voters, or probably closer to 6,000 voters have already, already voted. And out of a population of 52,000 people, some of which can't vote, you know, it's, it looks like early voting is off to a, a, a big number. So, you know, you've got absentee voting is stopped through mail, but you can vote here at the auditor's office and/or on election night. But, make a plan. I'm not going to tell you who to vote for. But, make a plan and figure out the issues and what you care about and make sure that you vote, because it is important. That's, that's how change happens. So, that's my supervisor's report. Next up is public input. Comments and public input are going to be limited to three minutes per individual. The board's not going to take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. I would tell you, and I see Marilyn's in the back of the room, Marilyn's brought some public comments up before that we didn't take action on that day. But, we did take action afterwards. And so, I mean that. This is your opportunity, either online or in public, to come and present whatever it is that you'd like to, to the board. We won't take any action today. No public input for any of today's items are allowed. But, we very well might do so in the future. So, with that, any public comments?
I don't want to waste that nice gentleman's time. But, the reason I bring up South World and it mirrors off of Darren's comment. And so, this is not to do with that particular agenda item. But, in general, when you guys hear things like that, I, I just hope it raises kind of a warning flag as we work through the comp plan. That it would not, correct, it would not be fair to that gentleman. He's the fifth business owner moving out there. I love businesses in Warren County. But, when we see those situations, and to put it into context, it is an urban-town environment. It's not your typical rural environment. The first commercial property ever built out there... The first commercial property ever built out there could have been argued that it wasn't spot zoning, because it's literally on the south side of Des Moines. But I just hope that, you know, it kind of raises the yellow flag, I guess, so to speak, that when we get into these comprehensive plan talks, that maybe that is more of a commercial district, and maybe it does get its own set identifier as a special district or something of that nature, that as we move forward with the comp plan, these are, you know, our ears are kind of perking up when we're getting these things before us, and so we can clearly identify these as we progress on this. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Okay, is there anyone online? Okay, so, public comments look like from the room only. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? I won't beg today, because we do have an 11 and an 11:15, so, last call. All right, seeing none. Our next meeting is going to be set for November 15, 2022. It'll be here in the boardroom. That's going to be set at 6:00 PM. That's the evening meeting. Again, I know I sound like a broken record, but we hold every other regular meeting in the evening for your benefit. And I think most people are well aware that at the end of the year, my term ends, and so the future board can set meetings whenever in the world they want to, but if folks don't come and actively take advantage of an evening meeting, it would not shock me if a future board says, if no one's coming to them, we're going to hold them during the day, because we've got lots of staff that comes to these, and it's, you know, prohibitive on their time to come to an evening meeting. So, you know, take that for whatever it's worth, but our next one's going to be November 15 at 6:00 PM. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mackinter?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCoke?
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all for your time.